Sorry, I'm trying to understand this contiguous lot thing. I know in some communities that if you own lots, multiple lots adjacent to each other, the property line gets basically obliterated between them, becomes one unit, one lot. Is that what we're saying here?
It's sort of what we're saying. What we're saying here is you can't, if the separate lots are by themselves, not in compliance with the zoning, you can't separate them. They essentially, they essentially merge. You can still, you can still, the lot line doesn't merge if each of the lots is in compliance with the zoning.
Okay.
So it's only, it's only if they're not in compliance with the zoning. So you can't, if you have a number of 5,000 square foot lots in a 7,000 square foot district, you can't sell two of them individually, you have to sell two of them together.
So that's when you get people playing games with lawyers and putting different trusts.
Checkerboarding, yeah.
But in general, too, these would be lots that pre-existed the zoning law.
Yeah, right.
Hey David, can you bring your mic closer?
So that, so that there's a, the idea is that the zoning at one point came into play and created what was deemed to be an appropriate minimum lot area. So this is not to exempt those lots that exist, if it's possible, if an owner has two of those lots that can make a conforming lot, he can't claim that he, that he still has the right to sell each of them separately, basically. Unless they comply to these specific exemptions to do with Atlantic Heights.
Does that presume that there are no buildings on this, these lots?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. You could have, you could have two substandard lots, one of which has a building on it, and somebody might, might want to sell the second one as a, as a building lot, and this is saying you couldn't do that.
Even though all, just for the sake of discussion, every lot is identical. Thinking of something that happened many, many, many years ago, but it was, somebody had a lot that I think was like 5,000 square feet, and they wanted to sell the lot, or something like that. And since it was a substan- a substandard lot in terms of dimensions and all that, the Planning Board turned it down. Every other lot in that housing development was exactly the same size, and I never understood that.
Well, this, this comes back to something that I've, I've raised in the past, which is that many of the zoning, many of the neighborhoods in the city are like that, that they were developed when the zone, either before zoning, or when the zoning had a different minimum lot area, so that the entire neighborhood essentially is non-conforming, and that last person who has an extra lot beside his or her house loses out because they can't sell it under the existing zoning. So that's, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a policy question as to whether you want to preserve that, that protection or not. I know David has some ideas about that.
I was just gonna say the counter to that is, the reason you did the ordinances was to bring the neighborhoods eventually into compliance. And most of these lots were created back in the twenties and thirties, and they weren't developed. And there is really no vesting in that, if you're going to have a planned community. And I do know the one you were meaning, and it was a separation of a lot from a house that had been built.
That's what, you're right, you're right.
Right. So they had already gotten the benefit of the lot by getting a building permit for the house, then they tried to subdivide the lot off, which would have made both non-conforming.
Was that somewhat recent, in the last three, four years?
Yeah, I would say five, six years ago. I think there are power lines running through it.
This was Islington Street, just off of Islington Street, behind Labor Ready, that neighborhood back in there. I don't remember the woman's name.
Okay, they were actually able to do it, if I recollect, because the lot actually conformed, or it was as nearly conforming as it could, and it was in separate ownership. So they then-
Just so it's clear in my mind, if, if there are two substandard lots, each with a house on each one, functioning independently historically, owned by the same person, that person could still sell off one of those lots as a house lot, and with a home on it.
No, I don't, not under this, I don't think.
No.
Normally, what they do in that instance is, the deeds are different. In other words, it could be, for example, myself and my wife, and the other deed might be just my wife. Those are not in common ownership. So that problem has rarely come up.
Okay.
At our last meeting, we had asked that you change "so as not to be in compliance" to "if the result would be a lot," or "lots that do not comply." I know that's like minor, but-
Okay, yes, okay. So if, I didn't catch that. So, yeah, "so as not to be in compliance", change that to-
If the result would be a lot, or lots that do not comply. Or you could probably just say, if, yeah, that's fine. That's what we all said.
I want to know how to keep track of it.
Does that make sense to you, Rick?
I think it says something a little bit different, but I'm not sure. That almost implies that you're creating a lot or lots, if, this is, so this is, this is basically saying that the lots already do not comply, seems like. Well, I, I can look at, I'll look at the word, yeah.
I'm just reading our comment. And I, we obviously struggled with it because there's erasing and crossouts and stuff.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you, Anthony, that, that wording?
As it words right now, 714-10?
No, with the, with the change in wording.
With the change?
Could you read it?
It would say, "Contiguous lots in common ownership shall not be separated or transferred in ownership if the result would be a lot or lots that do not comply with the provisions of this ordinance except as provided in section 10 714-20."
I think it does, yeah.
That does make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's an action-packed sentence.
You might want to break that into two sentences.
Maybe, that was what I-
Oh, whatever, I mean-
Yeah.
You worded my-
No, the intent. I was trying to get the intent right.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, and-
Okay. Okay. Anything else on, on the contiguous lots in common ownership?
Just to be sure, and I think the answer is yes. So if I had a lot that didn't have sufficient area, I'd have to get it addressed. That was the only other part, and I think we agreed that by taking it out, and with the way it's written, it would be subject to relief.
I'm not sure with the question, so-
Under the existing ordinance, remember, they throw you, they give you a process for combining the lots, lots existing prior to 1967, but they never exempted the area.
Right.
And the way you've written this, I see you haven't exempted the area.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, the area, the, I think what you're referring to is the non-conforming frontage piece?
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that would be separately in the non-conforming, in the non-conformity section. So you're right.
And the area is also addressed by this. If you don't have sufficient area, you gotta get it. So both of them are intact, and that's really a key component.
Okay.
May I ask one question, Dave? If you have two non-conforming lots together, I own them both, but even together, they don't create a conforming lot. Like in the, there are a couple of those.
You could then go to the Planning Board and dem- under the existing ordinance, you could go to the Planning Board and demonstrate that you've made the lot as conforming as possible, and they could thereby approve it as a buildable lot.
Okay, but you'd have to go through that process before transfer.
Basically, to prove that you've made it as conforming as possible.
With no other board relief?
I don't believe so.
As long as, yeah, as long as you didn't create the lot after the zoning bylaw took effect.
Yeah. That was the other part. That's how it got around the BOA. That's right.
So, so just following that through, for reference, would it help to have a 714-30 that puts you to where you would know that? Because the way 714-10 reads, if you have contiguous lots in common ownership, you can't separate them, okay, that makes sense, and you can't transfer them, if the result would be a non-conforming lot, well, you could, so therefore, a person would be stuck with ownership potentially, even if they wanted to transfer both together.
Yeah, and, and what you don't have here is, and we haven't handed it out recently, is the section on non-conforming lots, non-conforming buildings, non-conforming uses, which is in Article II, I think. And that basically says that a lot in existence before the zoning ordinance took effect can be used for single-family dwelling.
And so, well, I guess you just leave it, because it does say of this ordinance. So you, somebody just have to figure it out.
We could, we could actually refer, we could have a cross-reference back to the non-conforming use section.
Would that help?
Wayfinding.
Yeah.
Right there.
Okay. Now, the next section is new. It's something we talked about at a meeting. The front yard exception, exception for existing alignments. And this was a case in some of the older areas where the, the front yard setback that's required by the zoning is larger than the historical pattern in the city. And so this basically says, if the existing principal buildings on the same side of the, on the same side of the same street, in the same zoning district, and within 200 feet of a lot, are located closer to the street than the minimum required front yard specified in this article, the required front yards for such a lot shall be the average of the existing alignments of all such principal buildings. So basically, if you, if you have a front, required front setback of 15 feet, and all the buildings are 10 feet back from the street, then you can have your building 10 feet back from the street. You don't have to be different than anybody else.
That was what we asked for.
Within 200 feet of the lot line?
Of a, of a lot, you know, just of the lot. So as long as your, you know, horizontal distance from the lot is within 200 feet. Did you, are you thinking that's vague, or expansive, or?
I'm, I'm trying to find out what they're referring to. Is what, within 200 feet of the lot?
If the existing principal buildings within 200 feet of the lot.
On the same side of the same street.
So you're gonna compare 200 feet either side.
Of the lot line.
Of the-
Lot in question. Yeah, if you go to the lot, you're not gonna measure from the center. I would submit you would do it from the lot line. You'd go 200 feet either side. Take the average of those.
It seems like, you know, a lot is an area, whereas a lot line is a discrete point. So it just may be-
You'd feel better if the word "line" was after "lot."
Yeah.
Is there any downside to adding that?
Well, I guess the, the, if you say within 200 feet of a lot line, then it raises the question, which lot line? Is it, is it the right lot line or the left lot line? This way, you're saying, this, if you say from the lot, then, then the ones on this side are from this lot line, and the ones on this side are from this lot line. But if you say from a lot line-
Say the closest spot line.
Okay, you could say the closest, the closest side lot, sideline.
Right, because it's not referring to, to one lot and one building. It's referring to, it's looking at the row, say, of principal buildings on a series of lots, right?
Right. So if you have, if you've got a lot which is like, a lot has two lot lines touching the street. And so the lots on the east side, you're gonna measure from the east lot line, and the lots on the, the buildings on the west, on the west side, you're gonna measure from the west lot line. So I think if you put in, within 200 feet of a lot line, then it kind of raises the question, you know, you have to kind of, you have to measure from both lot lines.
The goal, though, is to take the corners, the two corners where they hit the, the street, and go 200 feet that way, and 200 feet that way.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So 400 feet plus the width of your property.
Yep.
To me, when I first read that, it'd take, it would take me a while to get to that. So I don't, I don't know if this is just me, or-
So did you want to say closest lot line?
Well, it's not the closest one. It's, it's both sides of the property.
If you think, too, in the ordinance, there are a lot of places where we do these boundaries, and they're all from the lot line. So I think anyone that's reading it will, will understand. And also, the first sentence says, "same side, same street." So you're sort of functioning in its front. I don't think there's too much error there.
If you think it's, if you think it's ambiguous, we could put in an illustration here. That might be a good place to put an illustration, just to have a, consider that.
Or pop up.
I think, maybe some-
Too much?
Maybe I learned visually, but yeah.
Okay. Okay. The next point, yard adjoining a railroad right-of-way, you recall that there was a very specific exemption for, I believe it was, rear lots in industrial districts adjoining a railroad right-of-way, and so there wasn't a required rear yard. We had a good, long discussion about this, and we decided to expand it to any district, and a rear yard or side yard, and, and basically say, "The yard adjoining a railroad right-of-way shall be 15 feet." So if there's a, if there's a yard required, then regardless of what else is in the zoning, if it's, if it's joining a railroad right-of-way, it shall be 15 feet.
I didn't understand it. I read that probably 10 times, and it, it just doesn't make sense. It says, "Any district where a rear yard or side yard is required, the minimum yard adjoining a railroad right-of-way shall be 15 feet." What, 15 feet from the railroad? 15 feet square?
Well, the yard is the distance from, the required distance from the building to the lot line. So this, this would be the yard from the building to the, the lot line that abuts the railroad right-of-way.
Then it should say setback.
We actually don't use the word setback that much in the ordinance, as we use yard, I believe. We try to be consistent.
The yard, to me, means like your backyard, all of that space back there, is a backyard.
Yeah, I just get the definition of yard is, in the ordinance, it's "an open space from the ground upward and open to the sky in the same lot with the building or structure." And then a rear yard is a yard extending the full width of the lot along the rear lot line, extending in depth from the nearest point in the rear lot line to the nearest point of the principal building. It's basically saying, yard, I know what you're saying, yard is what most people would say is setback, but in zoning is often used.
Actually, to me, yard is a, is a sum total of a number of square feet. That's a yard. And this just doesn't, it says, "The minimum yard adjoining a railroad right-of-way shall be 15 feet." What does that mean? 15 feet long, 15 feet wide, 15 feet square? That, it just doesn't, it didn't make any sense to me, that's all.
We have, in our dimensional regulations, we have minimum rear yard, minimum front yard, and minimum side yard, and they are expressed as feet, like 35, minimum front yard of 35 feet, or something like that.
This isn't spectacularly different from what we've got.
Okay.
Although-
So maybe, is there, is there a clearer way? Can somebody see a clearer way to, way to make this clearer, that would-
I think if you start doing it here, you're gonna have to do it everywhere.
Yeah.
And the idea of a yard, you go to the definition, it's the measure of the distance to the building. And wherever you see this, it's saying, "The measure of the distance to the building shall be 15 feet when it abuts a railroad."
Don, it's zoning lingo.
It's not comedy with language.
No wonder I don't get it there.
I got a que- is there, is there an instance, Rick, that there, that said, "Where a rear yard or side yard is required?" Are there districts where it's not required?
CBA.
Yeah, CBA.
Okay, okay, I got you. Okay, yep. Yeah, CBA.
I have to say, I had to think about notwithstanding. I've never been able to understand that word.
Okay. The, for the corner lot vision obstruction, again, this, this illustration is, needs to be adjusted to actually show the real dimensions we're talking about in this, in this provision. And Lucy has suggested that we add a plan view here, as well as this perspective view, so that it's, it's clearer. Yes, Rick?
And I've got a couple of comments, questions. First, I'm, I'm assuming that the purpose of this is the vehicular line of sight. So I was wondering if by adding the phrase, I'll just, accessory, structural, landscaping, or other obstruction to vehicular line of sight visibility, shall be erected, maintained, blah, 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 blah.
Yep.
And then my only question is, what about fences?
That's what it applies to.
That's what it applies to, yeah.
So we're going to, we're then now going to outlaw fences on corner lots?
Well, no, no, only, only within that triangle, and only above two and a half feet.
It actually applies to vegetation, too, if you recall, the houses that are cutted down.
That's a nice fence, two and a half feet high.
I guess, I thought currently we allowed fences as long as you can see through them.
Yeah, but this would. It says, you know, if it doesn't obstruct visibility, then it's fine.
Well, yeah, I think it's, it could be interpreted, I guess, so what are you thinking?
And that's why I want, that's one of the reasons I wanted to add that. But I just want to make sure that even with adding that, we're okay on like a broad iron fence. They want to put on the profit line on the corner. I could think of one right now, South Street at Union, beautiful fence just one.
So-
How about if it said, you know, landscaping-
It's coming down now.
That obstructs visibility, instead of or other obstruction.
It's beautiful.
If, if this is going to be, if this is an issue, we probably should just rewrite this, because it's, I think if we said that obstructs visibility, it might, it'd be a lot of openness for argument there.
I mean, I'm lost at South Union.
Why did you limit it at 10 feet? I mean, does that mean that somebody could, could put up a 12-foot obstruction?
No, within that area.
Yeah, so in other words, you could have, you could have something here, and then you could have a tree that came out over, you know, with branching cut over 10 feet, but just so long as you have this area that you can see through to see cars.
I see what you're saying. Okay.
Remember, too, we don't issue permits for fences except when they're in the HDC. So this is, quite often is gonna be after the fact.
Would it be a zoning violation if you put up a fence on the profit line on a street corner and could still see?
Well, there's, there's actually-
I would read that as no, it wouldn't be a violation. As long as you can see, you could pretty much do the fence of a five footer.
I think the way it is right now, I think we would disagree on that, because, because it, you could, it basically would say, "No structure, da-da-da-da, shall be erected."
Or other obstruction to visibility.
Or other obstruction to visibility, but it doesn't say that a structure is an obstruction to visibility, just says no structure, you know, it's-
If it's not, if it's not obstruction to visibility-
Rather than argue about the wording, let's try to fix it. And, and I think that the-
Bernie will take care of that for us somewhere down the road.
But the other question is, is two and a half too low? Is that, is, I mean, this is, it's a, it's a common number that's used, but I don't know whether that's just, you know? If you're sitting in your smart car, you might have a problem seeing over it.
Lamborghini, that's a lot.
Yeah. Well, you're more likely to be in a smart car than a Lamborghini.
Is it two and a half from the existing?
What?
Is it two and a half from the existing?
Is this in the existing right now?
Well, we do have one, but-
I'll check on it.
Yeah, I think we need, yeah.
Yeah, there is a corner.
Because then you define what, I, I think I can see through it, and you combine, so no, you can't.
Oh, I am. I just would hope that we're not, certainly, we need to be very wary of vehicular line of sight and things that we put out there to block that.
We just had an application where this came up.
Really?
Hope a snowbank does not constitute a structure.
It's temporary.
Was that over off of Echo Ave, that place across from Echo Ave?
Moving ahead, roof appurtenances is unchanged.
Can we change it?
Yes, we can.
Can we exclude solar panels? Would that be in there?
Actually, you know, this is, it's a very, that raises a really good point, because this is not worded well. The, what, what this is meant to be is the roof appurtenances that exceed the allowed building height. Because when you flip over to the next page, just quickly go to the next page first, and you see down at the bottom, it says, "Structure height and roof appurtenance height." So this was really meant to be those roof appurtenances that are above 35 feet in a single-family home, for example. So a solar panel typically would not be that, because you'd have the peaked roof, and you have the solar panel coming out from it, so probably would still be under the roof height, right, in most cases?
Well, on a gable's roof.
Yeah. But if you, if you brought, if you brought a flat roof up to 35 feet, I mean, I suppose you could get up there. But I guess what I'm thinking here is, we probably can fix this by, by talking about those roof appurtenances that exceed the building height, the allowed building height. You see what I mean? So if you, so basically, you're allowing the building to go up to 35 feet in a single residence district, it doesn't really matter whether it's roof appurtenance or not. You're only concerned about big things like satellite dishes, or huge chimneys, or, you know.
Elevator penthouse.
Elevators, yeah. Penthouses in your single-family house, yeah. So that, I guess really what that's all about.
I know you said it's, it's poorly written, some-
Imitate.
Because, because it's, but it only mentions area. We really, really don't care about area, we just care about height.
Well, what is, what, imagine this, you have a 35-foot height limit, and you have the eight-foot limit for roof appurtenances. If you, if somebody figures out how to build a roof appurtenance that's eight feet high and covers the entire roof, you've essentially lost your height limit. You've basically got a 43-foot height limit. So that's what that-
Which is what we went through once.
All right, and then, then if, if that's the goal, I think 33 is too high.
Okay, and I, I think it probably is, too. I think, I think 33 feet, 33% is too high, yeah, in most cases. And I think, we actually, Lucy and I had a discussion about this, and we talked about having, having distinct percentages between the residential districts and the business industrial districts, and perhaps having 10% in the residential districts and 33% in the business districts. Because you could have, on a business, on a business, you could have a lot of heat pumps or something on the roof, there would, could be much more than 10% of the roof area. So it might be that kind of thing, where you have 10% on the residential side and 33% on the, on the commercial industrial side. Does that sound good? Yeah.
Are you classifying or defining roof appurtenances to include mechanical equipment?
Yes.
That's why the 33 was up there.
Yeah, the roof.
Well, 33, I think partially from the building code.
Yeah.
John, do you have a question?
Are you defining roof appurtenances?
Roof appurtenance is any device or structure attached to the exterior of a roof of a building. Such structures, so not constituted building is defined, contribute to a gross floor area is defined, or exceed more than 33% of the total roof area of the structure. That's the way, that's the, pretty much, it's close to the existing definition. And, you know, we probably wanted to specify that it includes utility access, communications, mechanical, et cetera, and that 10% in a, would be a good limit in a residential district disposed 33, yes.
So a dormer is not a roof appurtenance?
Dormer is not a roof appurtenance.
Rick, would a, is 33% high for a commercial building?
We needed to pick a number at the time, and I think the logic behind 33, that blended into the mezzanine concept, a third of the floor area. If you're more than a third of a floor area in a building, then you're not a mezzanine anymore, you're another floor or story. And that was where that, we tried to make it similar.
And also, it was all aimed at the business, business districts, possibly industrial, because that was the only place you'd run into it.
Yeah, it was in a downtown, where you're trying to squeeze another story, or-
But there's no harm in going less than 33. 33 is definitely the max, because of the building code, but no harm in going less.
Right. It seemed like, it seemed like a logical number at the time.
The other thing, in terms of not trying to reduce, we were thinking about the fact that 33% might seem big, but one thing we thought we could do is, we could have a setback or screening from the roof edge, so that, so that even if it were 33%, it wouldn't seem so massive, if you couldn't see it from the street, because you're that high.
I think, too, the existing exempts the flagpoles. I would highly encourage you to keep that exemption.
Flagpoles on a roof?
Yeah.
If it was on the roof, you wouldn't count the flagpole as a height.
So, okay.
You sort of, they tend to have American flags on them, and you tend to avoid a lot of issues if you don't do flagpoles.
I don't think of flags on roofs, but I guess maybe they are.
Corporate flags.
So exempt flagpoles.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ever notice how car dealers seem so patriotic?
Emma, did you have a question?
I'm sorry, can you explain again why this doesn't apply to solar panels?
Oh, it would apply to solar panels, but I, but what I was saying was that the, when I rewrote this, and I didn't realize it until just now, I didn't make the connection here between what's on page 105 and the table on page 106. And the, the way it's written right now, I believe, in the ordinance, because it's not in the same type of tabular form, it basically says that roof appurtenances can be eight feet above the roof, the maximum height, provided that they don't exceed 33%. And so you've lost that, you know, the connection between the extra eight feet here. So, so what I was thinking was, a solar panel on a residential roof most likely is not above the peak of the roof, so therefore, it's most likely not exceeding the, the height of the building.
So it's-
So, so, you know, that's what I'm thinking. So then, what Tony says, well, maybe there's a solar panel on a flat roof, and so that would exceed, so maybe we need to think, so that maybe that would be a difference between, because most residential roofs aren't flat roofs at 35 feet.
Okay. Because I, I got confused by that discussion, but now I see it exactly. Yeah, and the way I would look at it, it is possible that it would extend up above the roof height.
But where you'd have a flat roof is likely in a commercial area, where the heights of the buildings are 50, 60 feet. And so adding solar panels to top of that, I mean, if they had a whole forest of solar panels, you then artificially raise the height of the building.
Yeah.
It's 21 and 60 feet, or 50 feet.
Yeah. But it may not be an issue if, if they're not visible from the, if the solar panels are not visible from the street, like either screened or setback or something, then it's-
I, I prefer that. I like that, allowing to do it as long as it's not visible.
Like, okay, um, total area.
It's, it's poorly writ. It's gonna be fixed.
Okay.
Mayor Cooper.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, it really-
Yeah.
And I think it is possible to have solar pa- there are a lot of houses that are, what do you call, gambrel, you know, like this? Saying you put the solar panel on top, so that is a possibility in the residential.
Right, okay.
I mean, and what you would do, what I would do in my house, is I would have the solar panels sitting on that flat part angled, so it could potentially be high.
Mm-hmm, could be above the height. So maybe we should exempt, should we exempt solar panels?
I, you know, that's a good question.
I don't know.
If we exempt flagpoles, please, that's also. I don't, I mean, that's, could make us greener.
I, I mean, I, I don't think that's a bad idea, I just, I mean, that's why I've, I've been puzzling through this, as I was thinking about everything you guys were saying.
How, how about if we exempted them in residential districts as far as height goes?
Exempt.
Well, exempt them from the height restrictions just in the residential zone, not in.
But is there a height limit to them?
Well, it would be, if we're calling them a, a, a roof appurtenance.
Then there is.
Then there is, cause then they'd be, it would be eight feet above thirty-five feet.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
And, and what about area, too? I mean, because, you know. They, they might well exceed ten percent.
I don't have a problem with that, do, do you see any problem with exempting height and area in the residential district?
Height I do. I could stick a forty-foot solar panel up there.
Yeah, that's the problem, is you're sort of assuming what the solar panel will look like.
But I don't mind keeping the eight feet, maybe keep the height and exempt the area.
Yeah, I think that might be a better approach.
Okay.
I mean, even the area, aren't there potential concerns that you could have? And I'm not saying there may be reasons you want to encourage this, but a whole roof covered with solar panels, then? And isn't that the potential of, of being not very aesthetically pleasing?
Well, if it's, yeah, again, it depends on the kind of roof, I'm trying to imagine, you know, when you, we define the roof height as halfway up, halfway up from the eve to the peak of the gable, that's, that's your actual height limit. So you've got a thirty-five foot height limit, your thirty-five foot high building under zoning could really be forty-three or something like that feet high total, to the peak?
Yeah, to the peak.
Yeah, so.
Most don't realize that.
Right, so, so if you had, so in fact, a solar panel that went all the way up to the peak, would in fact be at the eight foot limit already. If it were, if that were the case, if it were a thirty-five foot, if it were a thirty-five foot gable, that went, and the, and the peak was at forty-three, and the bottom, the eve was at whatever it is.
Yeah.
Thirty-six, something like that.
Just trying another approach, would it be possible to address this as an accessory use? Just the solar, so that you could actually recognize it in a variety of ways and.
Did you just draw a special exception or something?
I don't think you, I don't think you would need it by special exception, but perhaps like, set standards.
I'm saying, just something that, you know, you don't wanna go in the neighborhood and put this big thing up that ruins it. I'm thinking of, it's, most houses are like a cape, they're gonna, the, the panel's gonna be on the roof itself, they're not gonna extend it up and over.
I could see not having a height restriction causing a lot of heartburn with neighbors who.
Oh, I agree.
For any number of reasons.
Yeah, I, I actually think addressing it with the height applying and the area not applying, probably works. But, I mean, you know, to your point, Anthony, I, looking at a roof versus looking at a solar panel, I, I mean, I don't think they're even ugly ones or not.
Well, the, the only thing to think about is, it's great if your roof is facing the right direction, but if your roof isn't, they often put solar panels up with a separate structure that isn't the same, isn't parallel to the roof. And then, then you could, if you got a, if you got that one over the height of the roof, then it was.
Right, but they, you'd be limited, I mean, yeah, I can see exactly what you're talking about, especially if you have a house that's facing north like this, so you have the solar panel over here that's coming up.
Yeah.
If they have to come back to it.
I'll take all this down, I'll, take out a stab at it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm sorry.
Take it back to the workshop and let the elves work.
I wish they would, I keep asking them to, but they don't.
You just wanna be green or pretty, take your choice.
Sometimes it comes down to that.
Yeah.
Off choices.
Is that like smart or handsome? I don't know. I didn't get either. So, on page one oh six, the first table, residential, mixed residential district table. This is, there are a couple of things here that I wanted to, to look at. One was, as I already mentioned, under roof appurtenance height, to actually have the actual percentage coverage in this table, rather than necessarily having it in a, uh, in a, in a separate provision, so that they're connected better together. The, there are a couple, we, we've reviewed a couple of things and have a few questions about some of the, I think they're existing provisions that we, um, we want to revisit. For example, the, looking, comparing the general residence A and general residence B, uh, the rear yard dimensions, um, you go from a, the general residence A, which requires a seventy-five hundred square, square foot lot area, and allows a twenty-foot rear yard, and the general residence B, which is a five thousand square foot lot area, and yet the yard is, um, larger, so it's a smaller lot and a larger yard. And so, it's, and then, kind of the opposite type of thing happens when you look at the garden apartment, mobile home district, where you have a, um, you know, much larger lot area, and potentially a much more massive development, but still the same yard area. So, uh, this is just for, in, because you know the community better than I do, uh, thinking about these areas, would it make sense to, um, to perhaps drop the, uh, general residence B yard down to twenty? And per, which would be consistent with general residence A and the apartment district, and to increase the garden apartment, mobile home, rear yard to forty feet? Because it's a larger, larger development, larger buildings. And just, that's kind of
Sorry.
Open-ended question, you know, I don't know whether you, whether you've had any issues, you know, particular areas where these are, these have become issues or not.
The general residence B is basically, um, Atlantic Heights, right, and, uh.
No, it's the, uh, it's the heart of the downtown, it's your older districts. The buildings are towards the front lot line.
To me, it seems like the, the, uh, the back should be smaller, they're generally smaller lots.
The idea of the twenty-five was, since the building is located towards the front, was to keep the backyard more open. But frankly, given the open space requirements, I think, uh, what Rick is suggesting makes sense.
What do you think, David, about the forty foot on the C A?
I think that's a good idea, David.
Is that, so.
Forty in the lot?
The forty in the rural, in the rural, yeah.
One of the ones that's been, should I go back up one?
Yeah.
Cause I think it would be a good board discussion. The rural has worked very well, uh, however, we had to fight a subdivision one time, because it has no continuous street frontage. Where what they did is they made all sorts of pie lots, where each, where the tip of the lot intersected the streets, so it had access, but it was ridiculous, it was like you had thirty lots emanating right to a point. Uh, the idea of it was, oh, you didn't wanna encourage streets. And I wondered if it would be a good idea to have some form of street frontage requirement, just so that you prevented the other, although I have to say, we were able to argue that it was not the intent of the ordinance to do that. So it may not be as bad as, uh, so the lack of a street frontage requirement in the rural has been a problem at times. But you wouldn't want a heavy one either.
What would you consider to be an appropriate one?
Fifty feet. That way, at least you're demonstrating that you can do something off of a street. Or just be aware that there is no street requirement, but you will face those subdivisions periodically and be prepared to say no.
That's unusual for, to not to have a street frontage requirement, yeah.
Why don't we put something in there?
Yeah.
Then how come we didn't?
Uh, because we were trying not to encourage streets going through the lots.
Oh.
I don't think it's gonna come up very often, but as the land pressures build, it is the rural lots that are being looked at. And having a minimum standard seems to be the best.
What were, what were the, what were the widths that they were doing in terms of these, um?
The pies?
Pies?
Uh, they were very narrow.
Yeah.
Did we have to argue that in court, or?
No.
No.
It was used though to affect a rezoning, so you could argue that it actually failed that test.
Well, let me ask you, this is, is, is that issue of the, um, not just pies, but there's all sorts of other names for them too, but do those, do those have, uh, do those cause problems in any other way, for example, in providing emergency access, uh, and that sort of thing? Often, oftentimes, other communities have had problems with this, where they, even, even with a fifty-foot or a hundred-foot frontage, you end up, people use all the back land acreage, and they pull it down in a long bowling alley, and then open it up at the end just for the frontage. And, uh, and a lot of communities have had problems with that, because of making sure they can get access to houses that are way, way back in the woods. Is that likely to be an issue with any of them?
Good.
So, so is, I guess, is it, should there be a consistent lot width requirement?
We've identified this at the staff level, perhaps we might wanna redo it one more time. Perhaps we need a statement somewhere indicating that, what the intent of the board is with a rural, without having a street frontage requirement. Uh, cause the other one is, is Portsmouth traditionally does not do development by driveways. Each lot has its access to a street, so we don't have backlot development. The one time we had it, we were able to beat it back, I don't know if it was a close call or not. But I think, Rick, you've got a good point, too, if you could have a bunch of fifty-foot frontages, it'll almost have the same effect.
I mean, I think of most towns as having frontage of like a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet. What if we did that, what if we had a two hundred foot front?
Then most of the rural would be, uh, it, I don't know, it could be a taking, in the sense that they have all this land, and they do above a street, and they can't even put a house on it, because they don't have the frontage for it.
Couldn't they, couldn't they put in a subdivision then? I mean, that's, that's how most places do it, is do, by doing a subdivision, is there, I guess.
Drive the subdivision.
Is there a reason for avoiding a subdivision that you're trying to do, or?
Well, most of these rural lots have a lot of wet. That's the limiting factor on most of them. I think we need to clarify the intent of whatever standard we put there, so that everyone understands the way it will be, would be applied.
Okay.
We're different than everybody, aren't we?
I tell you, most communities cannot believe that we have a five-acre zoning in Portsmouth, and we've had it for a long time.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add about the frontage, or any, um, and then the, the other piece that, um, that we need, still need to struggle with a little bit more, is the, um, at the, the next to bottom line of that table, uh, structure coverage on a lot, uh, in some of the, in the S R A, S R B, um, et cetera. There, as I, as we've talked about before, there are many non-conforming lots, that are, they're much smaller than the minimum lot size, particularly in the S R A, that might be much smaller than one acre, and it might be difficult to achieve the ten percent structure coverage on the lot. So, so we need to look at, we don't necessarily want to, like, I'll, I'll leave it open, but the intent would not, a- as I see it, would not be to increase the coverage requirement generally, the cover, the coverage limitation generally, but to make a special provision for those lots that are below the minimum lot size. Does anybody have any concern?
Whereas now, if you have one of those lots, you have to go to B O A?
Yes.
Yeah, if you put a porch.
Do we have a lot of those that go to B O A, I mean, is that?
Lucy would say yes.
She would?
Yeah.
Have, have you talked to Lucy about that?
That's, that's Lucy's, that's Lucy's issue. That's an issue that she brought up to me.
Oh, but did she have a solution?
No.
Okay.
She said, you do it.
I tend to agree with Rick, you wouldn't wanna increase it, the trick would be, do you wanna reduce it, and that way, you can say at the B O A, that the ordinance more closely resembles what's out there, so you now have a new line to defend, I think that makes sense, too.
Or, or it could be something like the, you know, for, for, for lots, for pre-existing legal non-conforming lots that are, you know, less than an acre, um, you can, you can adjust the percentage inversely to the, about.
I like that, and, and then that's their out for not having to go to B O A, or they'd probably get relief anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, don't those that usually go to B O A get relief for that?
Except if in a butter complaint, because it's too close to their lot line, cause they've built over, but in general, I think you're, that concept is right.
Yeah, and, and this again, wouldn't, wouldn't affect the yard requirements necessarily, it's gonna be affecting structure coverage.
Yeah, that, actually think about it, Rick, that's the best way of saying it. By doing that, the yard requirements become more important, and the open space less.
Right, cause I think of those lots that go to B O A, they're usually going for multiple yards, you know, relief, and the coverage relief. And so this way.
Make it easier on the coverage.
In a lot of ways.
And harder on the yards, because that affects your butter.
So as the lot gets smaller and smaller, below an acre, the percentage continues all the way to the point where you, you've hit the lot lines, basically.
No, because you still have, you still have your yard requirement.
The lot lines, the yard.
The yard lines, yes, yeah, yeah, it could, could get to that point.
And also, I think you were saying it would be based on whether it was a pre-existing lot.
It would have to be a legal non-conforming lot.
So if you have a, a, uh, conforming lot, you're not gonna be able to do that. Did you see the woodlands, John, going to eighty percent lot coverage?
I'm just, that's exactly where I am right now, I'm looking at the wood.
Okay. Anything else on the residential, mixed residential districts table?
I just, I just wanna clarify, so we're getting rid of the coverage percentage?
No, keeping it there, but having a provision with respect to non-conforming lots, that, that adjusts it upwards if they're below, if they're legal non-conforming lots that are lower, that they're non-conforming because of the area.
And when you say adjusted upwards by a formula, or just generally?
My, my, my first idea is to have some type of formula that would be an inverse relationship, but I don't, I haven't written it, and I haven't come up with it yet, so.
What you had said at the last meeting was, you could take a percentage of the coverage in the area, and sort of use that as your baseline.
Percentage of the coverage.
But I, I don't know how you determine it, I mean, this gets back to, you know, what's your area?
Right, what's the area you're looking at, right?
Are we only doing S R A? Not S R B?
Well, um, I think that is, because that's such a small percentage, and it's, and we could look at the other areas too, maybe we could look at S R A, S R B, you don't wanna.
Well, you mentioned woodlands, that's why I was tripping.
Oh, I didn't know.
Yes, S R B.
But we're trying to hit ones that we've had a lot of going to B O A, do we, David, have, from those other districts, we don't typically have a lot going to.
Actually, do all residential districts.
In all residential?
Well, not single residence A as much, that would be true. And perhaps even be a little bit, but the smaller the lots, the more often you see them.
So, I'll, I'll look at that, we actually have, you know, we've mapped all those non-conforming, so we'll go back and look at those.
Frankly, if it's a pre-existing lot, why not have it apply to it? For.
I'm sorry?
If it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, perhaps that is a good option.
What?
To allow for that relief.
To allow for the relief here.
No matter which district it's in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Doesn't it get to the woodlands joke you just made?
It does, but I, it's not taken to the extreme, well, someone will.
We'll, we'll come up with some scenarios, you know, probably Lucy and David have.
Yeah, it's fine. Okay, um, on business and industrial districts, the next page, uh, the big change here is the addition of the new business corridor, uh, district. And next week, we'll be talking about this, we'll be, we'll, we'll be sending out a draft, um, special, special regulation for the business corridor district. And the idea here is to, initially to look at Lafayette Road, basically, and the mix of districts that are there, from general business to office, um, office research, and a couple of lots that may be M R O or M R B that are stuck in there, and some industrial lots down at the south end. And basically, looking at all of that area and, and mapping a, a new district that would, um, that would start from the premise of the general business district, but, uh, would have a couple of changes. And, um, the, um, these, as you see, the regulations here are pretty, pretty similar to the, the general business district. The, the height, I think, uh, it shows a lower height, I think I will, you know, maybe go back to the sixty for that right now. It's, it, it really doesn't matter, because people tend not to be able to get to the sixty because of the parking requirements, so it's almost, it's almost misleading, but this would be like a base district, and then we would try to build in some incentives to go to a higher level of, of, um, of design quality, site design and building design, and that's, that's what we're working on right now. And I think the first thing we, we, that we might do is, is on the floor area ratio, the next to bottom line, where it says, no regulation, no requirement, I think we might apply a, an F A R of point five there. We've been working with the numbers today, and it's, that seems like that might be a good one, that's, that's still higher than the typical level of development you have right now, but it begins to get at, um, some of the, the, um, it, it begins to give us a, a base to work from, to, to allow a higher level of development with higher, uh, design standards. The, the big change on this table is, uh, to do with the front yard, which is note two. Now, right now, you have, in most of the corridor, you've got a hundred five, is that right, David? A hundred five foot setback from the sideline of Lafayette Road, which is a huge setback. And we had a meeting, um, a couple of weeks ago, uh, with somebody from the Department of Transportation, and talked about their long-term goals for, for Route One, and also, the existing zoning refers to plans that are hard to find, if, if available at all, in, in City Hall. And so we're, we're taking out all those references, but what we're doing is, we're, we're go, starting from the premise that the long-term plan for most of Route One would be a ninety-two foot right-of-way, uh, which is enough for a five-lane cross-section, and, um, and, I'm not sure, four-foot, uh, shoulders.
And I think also-
Bike lane.
Yeah.
Yeah, bike lane, yeah, yeah. So, so that, the ninety-two-foot cross-section, then, then from there, you, because that ninety-two-foot cross-section has not been established yet, I mean, in parts of the area, we can't really define the front lot, the, where the front lot line is. So instead of that, we're working from the center line of the road. So it's forty-six feet on either side of the center line of the road. So that's where we're assuming a future front lot line will be for properties that get redeveloped. That's why, that's why we're working, when you, when you, when you go over to the, the next page where it says special yard requirements on Lafayette Road, that's why it refers to the center line, because we want to, we want to, we want to allow for a ninety-two-foot cross-section, which doesn't exist yet. And we want to allow for a, in this case, a twenty-foot front yard from that, from the edge of that ninety-two-foot, um, cross-section. So forty-six, ninety divided by two is forty-six, and add twenty, twenty feet, gives you sixty-six feet from the, the center line.
That's significantly better than the existing hundred and five, which isn't going to be developed, which the street isn't going to be built out to that standard.
So is that, is that reasonably clear?
Yes.
Okay. So what we will be doing, in, when, what we're talking about next week, and it will be, this is kind of the, the foundation for that, is we will be talking about a different, a different development option that's going to go in Section twelve, I think it is, which will be flexible development. And it's, we're going to be calling it a business corridor planned development. So it's, it's kind of building off what we were talking about with Smutty Nose to a certain extent, although it doesn't look at all like what we ended up with with Smutty Nose, but it, it's building off, off that approach, and-
No breweries.
No. The breweries are specifically not allowed. But it, it basically will allow some smaller front yards and with, and requiring parking to be behind the front line of the building, and encouraging mixed uses, and having a high, as I say, a high standard of, of development. And we're working on all those, those pieces. So this is the starting point, and the next week we'll get into the details. I think this can be an interesting discussion next week, as we've been, we've been doing a lot of work on that. And I think that's really the only major change on that table, is that addition of these.
Can I bring up two points for discussion? Bring up two points for discussion? I think, I didn't pick it when I first went through, but the waterfront business, I don't assume we're allowing, or we're not allowing any residential in there, so that N R should probably be N A.
Yes, correct.
And the other one, when we were doing the existing ordinance, we had a lot of discussion about minimum lot areas for the central business A and B. And these were a consensus at that time. I don't know if it's a good consensus, if they should be increased or decreased, but I think it's a worthwhile discussion.
Okay. Does, do you have any?
Forward.
Do we know, do we know of any significant groupings of lots that are down at that level?
Yeah, there are. The idea was to try to, without a minimum lot standard, there was a great potential to really make a much, much smaller, even down to seven hundred and fifty. The fifteen-hundred was more a, a consensus figure for the central business A. The central business B, which has the larger lots, the two thousand, wasn't really very scientific, and I think it could be bigger if the policy is to go that way. Frankly, I don't know what the policy is, but we've discussed this at other times in staff, and I think we should just play it one more time before you do the hardcore.
Shouldn't, I mean, I would think that C B A would be bigger than C B B, but it's the waterfront lots, so they're very small in general.
You know, think of Series and Bow and Penn Hall.
Where a central business B is like the-
But it seems that area is different than-
The post office.
North Mill Pond.
Like a pond area. It's dramatically different. Like, that area seems like, it's, it's not as dense. Where I don't, I don't mind the smaller, smaller buildings downtown. You know, a bunch of small buildings breaks it up, you don't get these massive structures.
And think of Parade Mall, when that was urban renewal, like, brought, there were probably fifty, seventy lots out there consolidated into one. Then you've now subdivided it into three. Is there a minimum standard that you wouldn't want to see in your central business B that they get to? And I think there is a figure. I'm just not so sure, two thousand is it?
But I think Tony's point is that further down on, um, the, the streets down right by the, the curve around the Health Club and the, the-
Raines Avenue.
Raines, Raines Avenue, the, the, the publishing, et cetera, those are fairly large lots.
Yeah, so they exceed the minimum in the central business A.
Right, but I think your question is, would we, is, is it our desire to encourage resubdivision of those down to fifteen hundred square foot lots? Is that what your question is?
I don't, I don't mind the, um, I think that's reasonable. And I, I think the concept is, is kind of reversed, except when you're looking at Bow Street and that area. That's, that's, that makes sense. Bow Street makes sense at the C B A the way it is. It doesn't make sense the way it is with, with that area. I understand that we're putting those both areas with the same brush, though.
And it's, and it's interesting, because we went through this with the, I think, the height limitations, and the, it doesn't really work for Bow Street. It really works for that area, so it's, it's kind of, they are very different districts. They're not the same thing at all.
What development scenario do you think there'd be, that would want to chop that into such tiny? I don't have the answer to that, but I'm just wondering what the likelihood would be.
We had it on State Street, and it was when condominium, you didn't have to condominiumize, you could actually subdivide. And some of them, we had one that was seven hundred and fifty square feet, and this is the first ordinance that actually had a lot area requirement. And the only thing I'm saying is, is this still valid?
How about somebody looking for cash to develop, subdivide their lot to get the cash that they have now?
So maybe what we should do is look at that area, lot sizes in that area, along the pond.
Perhaps move more to the mean, move more to the average.
Right. I mean, maybe it ends up being like ten thousand. I think of those as pretty big lots down there, but, some of them, anyway.
Okay, I will.
On the other hand, I guess I wouldn't be in favor of encouraging large lots. I mean, part of, I guess what we're talking about is the existing conditions. And, I mean, that, obviously, that's the way it is, but I, I, you know, I'm not sure that I want to encourage these gargantuan lots if we don't have to. Personally, I wouldn't be in favor of going from, you know, that much higher.
You mean like the ten thousand, or?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I think I was just-
Right, I was just, um, whatever.
Yeah.
Five thousand, I mean-
I'm just throwing that.
I'm in agreement, too. It just seemed really, really small.
Well, you're going to get a lot that's twenty by seventy-five. Is that, is, I think Cindy's point's well taken. Do you think somebody's actually going to make a lot that's?
What can you build on?
So I, I think it's probably going to police itself.
Yeah, I feel like it's been successful the way it's been, and, you know, just because urban renewal destroyed the north end, it doesn't, I just would not like to see us replicate that and continue with these enormous lots, you know?
Okay. Well, what I will do is I will look at, at lot sizes, um, if there's, if there's nothing there, I mean, if there, if there are, if there are five lots, you know, that are fifteen hundred square feet and everything else is four thousand, then, you know, maybe it's, maybe we don't need to worry about it. We'll see. The seven, ten seven thirty-two exception dimensional standards for certain lots in the industrial and O R districts. There was, the, the last draft of this had, was all referring to old lot, accessories lot numbers from the previous, um, uh-
Century.
Century. And as a result, I had no idea where these were, and so it was headed, like, the headings at Lafayette Road. I subsequently found out it was North Mill Pond, so, so I, I replaced the lot numbers with actual boundaries of North Mill Pond, Maplewood Avenue, isn't this street? But basically, this is the office research district that abuts North Mill Pond. And it's, there's like three lots there that are all owned by the railroad or something. So it's, 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 um-
This was an area that council asked to have zoned, O R, knowing it would become non-conforming, so you had to handle by the specials.
So basically, it says, you know, even though it's O R, the dimensional regulations, certain dimensional regulations here are governed by the industrial district. And then, um, in the, the second item, building height setback from the waterfront, this, in the existing ordinance, talks about the office research Mariners Village overlay district. And it's the office portion, yeah, the office portion of the Mariners Village overlay district. And it really only applied to one lot anyway. And what we're going to be doing is part of that whole area is re-mapping that area so that the area, the portion of the Mariners Village overlay district, the office research component of the, of the Mariners Research Overlay District will now be called Office Research District. And so it's basically just applying these regulations. Nothing's happening in that lot anyway. It's basically saying you can have, you can have, your height, building height should be limited unless you need cranes or something for offloading things from the river. It's, it's a very specific requirement for that area.
What is it now?
What is it now?
Yeah, what's the regulation now?
Oh, the current regulation is, um-
Where is this line?
It's way in the back of Mariners Village, very end, on the river.
It's on the other side of the railroad track.
Next to the, next to the industrial, waterfront industrial district.
Those of you who are around long enough, that's where Green Pages wanted to go.
And the, the existing regulation says, "In these districts, no portion of a building shall exceed forty-five feet in height when located within two hundred feet of high water mark. Along the shores of the Piscataqua River and North Mill Pond, structures necessary for operations related to permitted use, such as docking facilities and equipment, are exempt from this restriction. In the Office Research Mariners Village Overlay District, this restriction shall only apply to buildings located within one hundred feet of the high water mark, along the shores of the Piscataqua River, so long as those buildings are located on a lot in excess of fifteen acres."
So I'll pick out.
Yeah. It made sense at one time.
Took a long time to pin down exactly what that applied to. So that was what that was. Any other questions on that? Yeah, we've talked about the special yard requirements on Lafayette Road. Seven thirty-four and seven thirty-five are things we, and seven thirty-six are things that we recently adopted, so they're, they're essentially unchanged. Seven forty, we haven't touched the airport districts.
Can I back up for a second?
Yes, sure, go ahead.
The, the public access?
Page one oh eight.
Page one oh eight. There was a discussion a while back about use, you know, making this really usable, not, not just a token. Trying to see if we can have that kind of wording back in here again, so.
So what was the?
Well, the, you want to give a benefit for giving them public access? Are we defining what that is? Is that just, you know, a three-foot wide path to the water where no one could ever actually bring a kayak down or something like that? Real public, real public access to it, you know, not?
That actually came up once upon a time, the rezoning of Mike's Marina, if you remember. There was a proposal for, uh, public access to the water, and the problem was that it had parking for like four cars, and that, and it was supposed to be kayak and canoe launch. So it sort of negated any real benefit to public access. So it points well taken, Tony.
We call out all this, but here, but don't we get into kind of all those details?
Well, this, this is the, it's different, different district.
So maybe we should lift some of that stuff from C B A and plop it in there.
Yeah.
So the issue is, there's two types of public access. One is access to the water, and one is access along the water. And you're, you're, you're suggesting, in that situation, it was access to the water, and it was blocked? Is that what you were suggesting?
It, yeah, as I recall, it was, it was billed as a canoe and kayak launch, which is a great idea, except there was no parking.
It was also part of an overall project that didn't get, get any momentum.
Right, I mean, it was part, that's the part I was focusing on, just that one part, which sort of negated its value as a public benefit.
Not even worried about, it's much about parking, but just, I mean, practicality of, you know, of the use. You know, there's, there's, there's open, like, you know, that five percent open space discussion we had a while back? There's five percent open space that just happens because of building geometry versus lot geometry. That's not real, that's not what we're shooting for, open space. And there may be public ac, there may be technically public access to the water, but really not usable.
Well, in this case, the, if, if that's the case, then it simply counts as open space on a one-to-one basis, which isn't giving any benefit at all to the property owner. But the, the first, that's the seven thirty-three twenty, but seven thirty-three ten is the one where you're actually demanding public access, where it's recordable, recorded and enforceable by the city, so the city is actually, has accepted it in some way.
Okay.
So you're, you're giving them a benefit if the city has agreed to accept it as, as public open space. But you're not giving them a benefit if they just claim it as open space, public access. So I think, I think it seems like it should work.
Yeah, there is the enforcement that I was looking for, I didn't-
Okay, so flipping over, again, ten forty, we didn't change at all. We just changed some of the introductory explanation. Ten fifty, um, right now you have, right now you have a table that says conservation districts, and then there's two ta, two columns under it, one for N R P and one for municipal. I broke it out, and I, and we had this, I had this discussion with Lucy the other day. Perhaps we should just call this the natural resource, ten, section, section ten fifty, natural resource protection district, because it makes more sense. Municipal district isn't really a conservation district, because it's got buildings all over it, in most cases, many of them do. So it just seems, it makes more sense just to have a, a separate paragraph, a simple line for ten sixty, rather than saying N A, N A, N A, N A all the way down through it. So I haven't changed regulations, I've just changed format here. On ten seven seventy, um, the, the first three sections are pretty much the same as they are. And probably the fourth one, ten seven seven, one is backwards. Why does it go four then three? So it should go ten seven seven three, ten seven seven four. And, um, the, there are some discussions here. We probably want to look at this a little bit more carefully. First of all, dumpster isn't defined, so we probably, probably should look at that. And then the question is, should we prohibit dumpsters in required front yards? Should we just prohibit dumpsters between a building and a street? Should we prohibit dumpsters within twenty feet rather than ten feet of a property line? Have these things come up? Have you had any concerns about?
Not in residential districts.
But these are not in, these are not in residential, these are in non-residential districts, close to residential districts. I guess that's the issue.
I would defer to Lucy, but I have not seen too much of a hue and cry over-
Are these our current standards?
These are current standards, yeah. She was just concerned about, about situations where a, um, a business district might abut a residential district. And it will either, two, two, two different situations. One where a dumpster could be placed essentially right next to a-
House, right?
Yeah, right next to a house, pretty much, yeah. And the other one is where it could be placed in the front, um, in the front yard.
What do you think you'd want it in the front yard? I would think a prohibition on the front yard, because ten seven seven one, for example, says it shall not be located in the front yard.
I guess the question is, is a dumpster in accessory use?
I wouldn't want to see that in the front yard, I'll grant you that. The other one, though, is, shouldn't it be screened?
I don't know. That's what, that's what I was asking, is, is it considered accessory use, or is it just?
Do, do we consider them accessory use now?
Ken Smith Memorial Screening.
Because most, most residential properties wouldn't have a dumpster, they'd get city service. If it's a big apartment house, you have the dumpsters and sort of the residents order police there. But right now, what we'd say is any new dumpster would have to be screened, and that would tend to mitigate it. I'm not quite sure where the screening works on this, because I didn't think to check it for that.
We'll look at this some more.
And you know, it, it might be good to touch base with Jason, because he's the one who gives out complaints about dumpsters. He loves to go on dumpster calls.
We've, we've discerned this from a construction dumpster, correct?
Yes, this is a permanent dumpster, this is a permanent dumpster. This would be like the dumpster outside.
Like, but it just says no dumpster.
Got it, okay.
So, I remember we talked about dumpsters at one point many moons ago. I just didn't know how, I've got a two-month project, and I need a construction dumpster.
You're just going to have to carry that stuff down to the end of the block.
Oh, they, they love to do that. Oh, they, they love to do that.
You gotta go to the HTC.
So I, I just wanted to make sure we didn't get tripped up with...
I'll, I'll, we basically needed to find that one.
Yeah.
I think the screening is another one we'll, we'll watch.
And that's taken care of, it's not...
Okay, so we're not talking about...
Not necessarily, because not all the projects would come through site review, they might have a...
We're not talking here about temporary dumpsters then, that are in a residential district where some renovation is going on.
Correct, that, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't get tripped up on that.
Yeah, and I don't think, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I can't imagine a situation where we'd want a dumpster to be parked out of the...
Well, there's actually, there's two separate things, the front yard of a business or between the building and the street.
You're right.
A dumpster, uh, could be, um, at one end of a parking lot, far enough back to be out of the front yard, but still...
The main, beautiful thing.
The main view thing, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And it would depend on the business. Some businesses, you know, want to be, look nice for customers, and some businesses don't need customers, so they don't care about that. So it's, it's, it's one of those issues, we just need to think about the various...
Right.
I, I guess I was just hoping there might be some examples of some issues that come up, but I'll talk to Jason about it and see what he says, yes.
Yeah, because we don't, and that doesn't come up for us.
Not very often.
Okay.
What were you gonna say there?
Also, I was gonna say, if we're looking at two, uh, pods, you know, those personal, just, we haven't really addressed, we're sort of treating them by not treating them at the moment.
What are pods?
They're, they're...
Storage units.
Storage units, you have up here?
I think if they're temporary and related to construction, we don't need to worry about it. But I am afraid that some of these could become more permanent, and you might want them.
So, so what, if, if one of those appears, do we say that's an accessory structure and it's not allowed? Is that how we currently...
So far, the only ones have been related to a construction project. So when the construction project is done, they're gone, so we haven't faced that yet.
It's not really a structure, I don't think.
But a definition of a structure is something assembled.
Maybe we should include them in our accessory structure definition, I don't know. I mean, if that's the trend, I wasn't aware of these things.
I wasn't either, but in the last year, all of a sudden, Jason would be a good one on that, too.
What, what happens on the, oftentimes, you, it's a substantial renovation and you're living there.
Right, you want to put your stuff out there while you're, and again, that's temporary. To me, that's no different than a dumpster, it's when they come in there ten years later.
Okay. Um, turning to page one twelve, um, minimum distance between structures in non-residential districts and lots in residential or mixed residential districts. You know, we, we talked about some uses in, uh, in another section, but in, um... Now, I guess maybe this is, this is, we, we, we just come back to look at this again, I'm forgetting where we are. So we've got the structures and we've got some uses, uh, and they're all separations from, from residential districts. Um, and in the first one, seven eighty-one, um, we probably want to say, instead of saying no structure or additions to a structure, I think we're gonna say no portion of a structure, including accessory structure. So, so it's, it's just to try to be a little bit more, the additions to a structure was kind of confusing. So I think we'll say no portion of a structure, this is including accessory structure.
And the intent of this was to actually protect the residentially zoned property from that use.
Yes.
Which is why I don't think we've had too many problems. Uh, the problem comes is in the next one, where you have the non-conforming use.
What, you said non, you said non-conforming?
Well, where you have the business, where you have a residential property, like in a business district, and then you have the business coming in, there's no prohibition on the hundred feet.
But this is still, this is still relating to, I think you may have in the current one, a mixed residential use, but these are still distances from a residential district, so...
Okay.
We've got the outdoor performance facility, indoor performance facility, outdoor recreation. And outdoor recreation, is that entirely gone from the ordinance now?
I think we took it out.
It took it, we took, we took it, yeah.
We talked a lot about taking it out.
I think we did.
That can probably go.
Yeah.
And then, so...
No outdoor recreation, it's not allowed.
Yeah, not allowed in the city.
We may be green, but we're getting very green here. Veterinary hospital with kennels, uh, motor vehicle service station. Um, now, the, the next one on sales, rental leasing, distribution, repair of vehicles, et cetera, et cetera, we need to review that, because there were several different versions of this. And, um, we want to make sure we pick up a number of things that are, that are in the new definition. And we want to make sure we have things like motorcycles, tractors, snow blowers, you know, all this sort of stuff. And things that are large display things that might have a lot of noise and so forth. So, um, we'll put all that in there as part of that separation. And then truck fueling facility and truck terminal, so those were basic uses. And then we have, so that's basically on the use, the location of the lot on which those exist. And then the next part is specific uses within a lot, parking access, outdoor entertainment, and sexually oriented businesses, which is addressed separately. Yeah.
On, on section ten seven eight zero, the main heading...
Yes.
Can you take that second and and make it an or, just to be consistent with the seven eighty-one and seven eighty-two?
Second, yes. Yep.
And, and right below there, what, in that chart, what does use now mean, use number?
Oh, the use number was gonna be, remember in the use table, we have all the uses are numbered?
Oh.
And I, I just went, didn't want to fill that in until we hit the final numbers on there. Because I keep changing all my cross-references.
We're messing with your mind.
That's gotta drive you nuts. On page one thirteen, then, we could get rid of that outdoor entertainment there, too?
Yes, no, that's outdoor entertainment, which is like...
Different than the recreation, yeah.
That makes sense. You were getting rid of outdoor recreation, right?
Yes.
Um, how, how would you define something like, uh, water country?
That is exactly why we got rid of outdoor recreation, because we, we removed it from the zoning ordinance, so it's no longer an allowed use.
And it's not an allowed use today, this is clearer.
It was, that was, that was the issue.
What's the definition of truck fueling facility?
Yeah, buzzies.
A facility, a facility primarily used for the fueling of trucks, which may include such accessory uses as a service, repair, convenience store, and/or public bathrooms.
Is the, so it's primary use has to be fueling trucks?
Yes.
Shouldn't it be any use of fueling trucks, I mean? Or is, what's the intent here?
Well, it is a use that is permitted in certain districts and not in all districts. So it's distinct from a service station, for example. So, um...
You're defining it so you can regulate it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what the intent is, is the intent, um...
The intent was, for example, on Route One bypass, those stations there, they grew over, yeah, they grew over time into truck stops by virtue, and this is to prevent that sort of thing from happening.
But they're not, by this definition?
Uh, you have to look at where the use is allowed, it isn't allowed in those districts.
So you're, okay, so, but are you saying that they are? Are they truck fueling places, or are they service stations?
Uh, they're, one of them is a truck service station that happened by evolution over time.
But by that definition, I mean, that'd be pretty hard to argue, because they have a gas pump for cars.
Right, but it's, I guess, the point I'm not quite following you with, it's an existing use that we, that the board decided should not have been there. This is the regulation that prohibits another station down there from doing the same thing.
But they could argue that they're not, they're not a primarily a truck fueling station, we just have, they have one island.
When you start doing the diesel fuel, you begin to have a problem. Unfortunately, we woke Don up.
Case in point.
Don's truck.
I think we're, we're trying to get to the same place.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm confused by the definition.
This use is only allowed, I believe, right now in industrial districts, and it has to meet certain requirements.
So I guess the question is, how do we define this more, more precisely as something that distinguishes it from a service station?
I would argue that right now, if someone put up one island with a diesel fuel thing, they're not primarily a truck fueling facility.
Correct.
But we don't want that, we don't want that, even one island, because then they become a truck fueling facility.
Only if they expand it beyond a certain point. I mean, realistically...
I just don't want...
We're looking for more definition.
Yeah.
Define the point.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let me give you an example, um, on Route One bypass, there are stations that have four pumps for diesel. Trucks do go in, um, people like me that drive diesels go in, people like you, and, but offsetting that are two, four, six, you know, eight, ten, twelve gas pumps. So you get to the question, primarily.
That's my, that's my point.
That's exactly your point, yeah.
So we need to be more specific, maybe?
Yeah.
I don't know why it has to be primarily, they offer fuel for, uh, fuel for trucks, then, um, and they could limit it by canopy height. If they wanted to have diesel, but they didn't want trucks, they could do it with canopy height, probably.
Is, is it really about tractor trailer trucks?
I think so.
It's really about the truck fueling. It hasn't been a problem since we've done this, but I can understand why you might need to tighten.
So if we're here now, we might as well address this.
I'm sensitive, I live...
Yeah, well, you've, you've seen it, it's, that's the one that we lost a court case on.
Well, is, is it the, is the issue, I mean, you, I don't think you can address it through canopy height, because that's how they fill up the tanks, they have a toilet truck coming in usually.
That's true, yeah.
So, um, so is it the question of, do you sell diesel fuel or not sell diesel fuel, is that what the issue is?
It's the big rigs.
Oh, no, well...
But it's also a, a huge storage tank that is for diesel and a very small tank that's for gasoline. Uh, if you went out to the, uh, you know, but, not buzzies, the truck stop out on Greenland Road, you're gonna find that those tanks are primarily diesel with a very little bit of, of gasoline. And that, by the way, is another one that grew organically from, from a gas station.
How, how do we define truck fueling facility again?
A facility primarily used for the fueling of trucks, which may include such accessory uses as service repair, service comma, repair comma, a convenience store and/or public bathrooms.
Why don't we talk to Bob about that one? I'm sure you had lots of experience with both of those. And, and I'm thinking, you ought to do say something about truck size or weight or number of axles or...
We do, but, again, the question is, I think it's the primarily part, so I said...
If you took primarily out of that sentence, does it change it?
Yeah, I think probably it's based on gallons. I mean, if you, if you sell X number of diesel, diesel gallons, and you sell like point four, five X number of, um, gasoline, you're primarily...
But how, how do you, how do you figure that out? Now you get an enforcement issue?
No, I think, I think you could probably look at the percent of ga, of, uh, the tanks.
The pumps.
Yeah, what, what are you storing in? So remember we took this down on the Irving Station on Route One? The concern was that it would be a truck stop. The reason they were able to convince us it wasn't is because they showed us their percent, or most of the tanks were for gasoline. There is diesel there, but it's a small percentage to pick up, uh, you know, those strange people that drive diesel Mercedes.
So what if you said, what if you simply said...
I know nothing, I know nothing about this business, but couldn't, couldn't they just fill the tanks more often?
Uh, they can, but you lose money on that, I mean, that isn't the smartest thing to do.
What if you simply said, you know, with no more than four...
ML's gonna save the day.
No, I'm not gonna save the day, I'm gonna ask a question. If you get rid of primarily, and just leave it out, then you have the ability to regulate it if it becomes a problem.
But I think that if you take primarily out, then every, every gas station that has a diesel pump is a truck fueling facility.
Right, I think primarily is pretty obvious.
Primarily is too, too, I, it...
Majority?
Squishy.
No, and, and, but my thing is that, so, it, so you say, get rid of primarily, but this shall not prohibit, uh, provision of diesel fuel on a regular basis, or provision of diesel fuel at a service station. Because the, the reality is that if you say not fueling for trucks, then you've, you do have something squishy, but you don't have to worry about arguing what primarily means. You, you, you still have a bad argument either way, because you have to say, are you fueling trucks, yes or no, what's your practice? But now you don't have to prove some super majority or whatever the heck primarily is.
We may have to look at the vehicle registration, I guess.
Let's talk to Bob.
I think Bob, Bob will help.
Yeah.
Rick, are trucks defined? Trucks, um, a light truck is defined, and a light truck is, um, defined as a truck of ten thousand pounds gross vehicle weight, rating or less, including a pickup van, truck, base station wagon, or sport utility vehicle, which is a US Department of Transportation definition. So basically, we define a light truck as a small truck, and I guess we just know what it is.
And some of those are diesel.
Absolutely.
Right, well, some cars are diesel, too.
But the point is, you want to regulate trucks other than light trucks. So maybe you say, take out primarily and put trucks per in, or comma, comma...
Those greater than ten thousand pounds.
Or other than light trucks.
Yeah.
And that way, you go in, you go in, trucks go in, construction even, trucks can go in.
Light trucks go in.
Right. Why don't you try that with Bob?
Yeah, right. See what Bob says.
Bob, we've decided this.
We did, we did tell Bobby it didn't have to be you.
He seemed very, he seemed very grateful.
He's probably watching it. Sure Bob's watching it, man.
Oh, yeah.
From Rusty.
Well, my cell phone's...
Changes that station, there they are.
All right, somebody, we'll put a big number up so Bob can see it in your cell phone.
Call home.
Call us, Bob.
Okay, um, then, um, on page one thirteen, the last major section, additional location restrictions for certain non-residential uses, um, the section ten seven eighty-three ten, the first paragraph, is changed from the last version that you saw. Um, the last version that you saw was really complicated. Um, and it was all about Marcy Street, Mechanic Street, you know, oh, no, we, we took all that out. Basically, it said, a, a restaurant bar, place of public assembly, function room, with total occupant load greater than five hundred should not be located in a GB or BC district within two-hundred feet. And we took out the negative, committed a positive, and took out the occupant load and, uh, just tried to make it simple, more simple. So restaurant with accessory use such as shall be at least two-hundred feet from residential district.
Looks for me.
I think it looks a lot better.
So that's where we are right now. So we will have, uh, we'll get you something on, um, Business Corridor District, and I think we'll have a lot of discussion about that next week. Okay.
Any other comments or questions, or David, can you just run us through that, we have a meeting?
Yep, next, uh, week we'll be doing largely this again, but we'll also have a meeting with Bob.
Okay.
Uh, the following week is one that we're asking you all to try to make. That'll be a meeting where we will be reviewing the various issues arising from the site plan review of, uh, one fifty Greenleaf.
And that'll be a public hearing, correct?
That'll be a public hearing. Effectively, what'll happen there is there'll be afforded an opportunity for all parties involved to present what they believe the information is, and then this board will make a decision. Um, and then after that, we're in our regular meeting, where I believe we'll be having some zoning review as a part of that, and then back into work session mode.
So next week, we're starting at six-thirty with, with the Bob?
Six-thirty to seven for a meeting with council.
And we'll start zoning at seven.
At seven o'clock.
Start at seven, correct, so, yes, Don.
On the fourteenth, you said that this board make a decision. What decision?
Twelve, the twelve.
I'm sorry, the twelve.
Well, the legal notice is being published, and in effect, you're being asked to determine, uh, whether or not there were misrepresentations made, or if the board had the, all the information it needed. So at some point, you have to make a decision on that. And then following from that decision, other actions will start.
Okay, and we'll find out what those other actions are after that decision is made, or...
And frankly, I don't think we should discuss this too much, because it is an issue of litigation.
Okay, I was just thinking about taking time to do some homework, that's all, just...
Yeah, Tony, will we be receiving materials beforehand?
I, um, materials should be going out next Friday, so we might be able to give them to you that night. We might on Thursday night.
On the fifth.
For the twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the twelve.
On the fifth, though, for the twelve.
If we fail in that, they'll be mailed out Friday, and it's possible that parties may not have everything, or even that Monday, but you would have materials before the twelve.
It'd be nice if we could have them for the fifth.
I just hope no one expects us to say the materials.
It's asking a lot of, a lot of parties.
Okay, well...
The normal would be that Friday.
Yeah.
What we're asking is that they prov, that they provide everything, because we've assumed that you've thrown your stuff out.
But the file is available. Very good thrower outer.
So, any other comments before we call for German? Call for German? Good night, thank you.